Happy New Year, everybody. Glad to see everybody's back. Hopefully, everyone had a great holiday season and hopefully got some rest and rejuvenated and ready to kick off 2023. So, we are going to call to order the City Council for Tuesday, January 3, 2023, to order. And we're going to begin with prayer tonight. Is Pastor Scott Paisley here? There he is. If you could lead us in prayer tonight, we'd appreciate it.
Let's pray. Our Heavenly Father, we are grateful for a new year. We thank you for new beginnings. And Father, we also realize that in life and in time, things change. We face change all the time. We're grateful that you are never changing. You're always the same. And so, we appeal to you for help and for strength and for wisdom. For those who lead and serve our city, we do thank you for our mayor, Mayor Curtis. We pray for your hand of blessing upon him and his staff, those who serve and administration. We pray for our police chief, Passwater, for our fire chief, LaRoche, for those who serve as police and firemen, our public works, all who are involved, for those who serve the wards of this city as well, decisions that are made, the work that's done to help this city operate, Father, for the good of this city, for our citizenry as well. And we ask your blessing and help on this meeting, this first meeting of the new year, decisions that are made, things that need to be done. We ask, Father, not only for tonight, for the year ahead, for your good hand be upon us, and, Father, for wisdom and provision and safety and strength. And we'll carefully give you the glory. We ask all of this in Jesus' name.
Amen.
The City Council will lead the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We'll move into item four, and that is public comment. Please give your name and direct your comments to the mayor. Comments are limited to three minutes. No personal attacks upon council members, staff, or other persons in attendance or absent will be permitted. In addition, discussions matter which are currently under legal review will not be permitted. First up is Mr. Steve Hunter.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Happy New Year. It appears from my perspective, city's running well, fiscally solvent, disliked accounting. I'm here in support of Mr. Mark Jones's conditional use permit request. The particular matter was approved unanimously by the Planning Board. The judiciary have submitted communications supporting this particular project. Additionally, the mayor has appears to be favorable for this particular project. And I know that you guys are going to do the right thing, and I'm just saying vote firmly for this particular project. Thank you.
Next is Joe Thomas.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Joe Thomas. I'm the owner of Little Light of Mine Childcare Center in Kankakee, as well as Legacy Banquo Hall. I just wanted to give you guys an update because we are reopening tomorrow. We have applied for our liquor license with the state. We have installed the cameras. And we've run over everything else that's on this list. I did just have one question about question number four, about there being no guns inside or outside the premises. We do have additional security that I've hired for the inside of the premises and for people that may be getting in and out of their cars. But as far as anything else in inside the cars, I don't think we have the right to search anybody's car. So, I would like to get some assistance on that. So, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I can give you a call tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay.
Next is Jim Cuppler.
Good evening. My name's Minister Jim Cupfer, and I'm here to speak on Victory House of Kankakee, which 11 years ago, I went into, and I was there for two years. I had a place to live. It wasn't a homeless shelter. This was a ministry. I was broken. I needed direction. I needed God in my life. And Victory House gave me a vision. It gave me structure. It gave me a new path to follow. I didn't graduate a homeless shelter 18 months later. I graduated Victory House of Kankakee County. Today, I'm a minister, and in two months, I will be a pastor-teacher. So, I'm grateful for Victory House, and I wish that you all would consider it not as a homeless shelter. I actually cook at the homeless shelter you just approved. And the gift of God is doing beautiful things. However, putting people out at nine o'clock in the morning and making them walk the streets for four hours, eight hours a day, it's not giving them the structure that's needed. Victory House has a structure, has a program, it has everything going with it. I just hope that you considered that. I don't know where I would have been without it. So, today, I'm a functioning person, owns my own house that is married, and employs people. And I'm grateful for Victory House being there when I needed it. So, you all have a blessed night. Thank you.
Mr. Mark Jones? Oh, okay. No comment. Okay. Okay, we're going to move on to item five, and that is roll call. Five A is City Council.
Brown.
Here.
Jones.
Present.
Johnson.
Here.
Cobb.
Here.
Lewis.
Nivares.
Here.
Marzak.
Present.
Swanson.
Crawford.
Present.
Osenga.
Present.
O'Brien.
Here.
Barron.
Here.
Malone Marshall.
Prue.
Here.
Eleven present, three absent.
We do have a quorum. Next is item five B, Department Heads.
Passwater.
Here.
LaRoche.
Here.
Kubal.
Present.
Taylor.
Here.
Lopez.
Here.
Pigash.
Present.
Nelson.
Beasley.
Here.
Hoffman.
Here.
Crosswell.
Brewer Watson.
Here.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to item six.
Minutes for Monday, December 19, 2022.
Is there a motion for approval of the minutes?
Motion approved, Mayor Curtis.
We have a motion from Alderman Osinga to approve the minutes for Monday, December 19, 2022. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Crawford. Is there any questions, comments, additions? Seeing none, roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Nivares.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
Eleven i's, zero n's.
Minutes are approved for Monday, December 19, 2022. Next is item seven, seven A under petitions.
PB 2022-11-3, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to operate a halfway house, Christian Training Super Living Facility at 152 South Greenwood Avenue by LaSalle Ministries, Mark Jones.
We're going to place this on the agenda tonight for first reading, and we will have a second reading in two weeks. But if, Mr. Hoffman, if you can give us an update on the Planning Commission results, please.
Be happy to, Mayor. Yes, we have the public hearing on this case on December 20 for the Planning Board. The Planning Board did recommend the approval of this with a number of conditions. Their approval was unanimous, as Mr. Hunter mentioned earlier. The conditions include having a house manager on site whenever they have residents in place, compliance with all of the city's fire department and code department requirements. The fire department will actually set the capacity of this facility. LaSalle believes it's going to be in the range of eight to 10, but that will ultimately be determined by the Life Safety Code of the city and the fire department's interpretation of that. We have a condition in here that the facility may be open on a temporary basis for a maximum of 180 days. That's consistent with the other facilities that we've approved in the last year or two. Once that 180 days expires, they would absolutely have to have that sprinkler system in place to continue to have residents there. They included an intake procedure with their application, and so, we've concluded that as an attachment that they will follow to monitor who is living in the facility. If they change that, they need to provide the city a copy of that. And then, lastly, that property currently doesn't have any parking spaces on it, but there's space off the alley to put a couple of parking spaces. So, we're requesting that those two parking spaces be provided to be compliant with the code or basic variance.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have item nine, standing committees. We have none. So, next is item 10, Report of Officers, item 10A.
City of Kankakee bills in the amount of $572,492.09.
Do we have a motion to approve the Report of Officers for the City of Kankakee?
I'll make the motion to approve the Report of Officers and pay the bills in the amount of $572,492.09.
We have a motion from Alderman Nivares. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Osinga. Is there any questions or comments about the bills for the City of Kankakee? Alderman Osinga?
I have one, Mayor. I apologize. I didn't get a chance to call Elizabeth today. Check number 80298, KRS Incorporated, for $9,300.
KRS, that would be Kinky Riverfront Society. So, I'm sure, I'll let Comptroller Kubal explain. I'm pretty sure I know what it is, but I'll let her explain it. Probably the allocation towards the hiring of the Executive Director, I would assume?
Mayor, that's correct.
Okay. So, we split that cost with KRS and Kinky Valley Park District, so that's our allocation. We will have stipends every so often that will go up front, so we can pay for the Executive Director.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions regarding the City of Kinkie bills? Seeing none, roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Nivares.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
I abstain as to check 80287 to gross credits Abraham National.
Roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Nivares.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
I abstain as to checks 32903 to Baron Hewitt Oil and 32923 to Kankakee Truck Equipment to avoid conflict of interest.
Thank you. Prue.
Aye.
Eleven i's, zero n's.
The bills are approved. I need to go backwards. Evidently, I'm trying to move really fast tonight, and I apologize. I went right over item eight, Communications. You see, we have no Communications listed. We have no action items under Communications, but I do want to tonight provide two Communications. And so, I'm going to defer to Comptroller Kubal with the first one. We have hired a new Assistant Comptroller, and I'd like Comptroller Kubal, if you can make an introduction. She's here with us tonight.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Paula, could you stand up so everyone can see you? I have to stay seated because of my mic, otherwise I would stand up as well. This is Paula Rogers. She started today, is her first day, as Assistant Comptroller for the City of Kankakee. She comes to us with a lot of really great experience to help our office take it to the next level. She has been at a variety of different kind of employers, for-profit, non-for-profit, governmental, has a lot of expertise within technology. And I can tell on day one, will teach me a thing or two or more about Excel. She is very skilled with all of those things. And we are just really looking forward to, like I said, taking it to the next level, being able to have her mind, look at what we have, and lead us into that next step, potentially in the future, new software and things of that sort. So, we're just really excited to have her and have her on our team and have her here at the city. Thank you, Paula.
I'd like to echo Comptroller Kubal's statements. Today was her first day. So, today was trying to get the, we'll call it the lay of the land, trying to introduce herself to all the Department Heads. And hopefully, as Aldermen and all the women, you all get to know her. As I said, the Comptroller's office is, since Assistant Comptroller Cambic had retired, they've been working a little, you know, they were working a lot before, and they've been working even a lot more here in the last 45, 60 days here. So, we're excited to get back to full staff there and help alleviate some of the work that needs to be accomplished up there. So, welcome to the City of Kankakee, and we're excited to have you. So, I also, tonight, I'm going to defer to Chief Passwater, if he can come up. We had a officer that retired today, officially, I think, tomorrow, but last day in uniform today. So, if we can have Patrol Woman Golden, if you would come up.
So, actually, tomorrow was her last official day. But because of your schedule rotating for days off, she'll be off tomorrow on her last day. So, we celebrated today at two o'clock with the Department for her retirement. Morgan has 27 years on as of December 26 of this year. So, she went a little bit longer, yeah, last year. So, she went a little bit longer to retire on her dad's birthday in memory of him. She's been a great officer. I think she's one of those officers that most people know in town around, just because working day shift a lot. She was also the elderly service officer, so she worked a lot with Catholic charities and with the officers, too. Anytime we need to refer anybody over to Catholic charities or any senior citizen place, she was the person that we refer the person to. And she worked with them. She was excellent doing it. There's no one nicer in the whole department. I'm serious. Certainly no one nicer. She was a detective for several years up there, and she did a great job. She did a lot of work with cases involving children that have been abused or women have been abused through child network and doing some stuff with them. But she's had, I think, a good career. We're going to miss her because she's got her own kind of style with us. She's pretty unique, and I was always kind of, you see her every day, and she was always happy to come to work, and she was always happy when she left work every day. So, yeah, thank you for 27 years. I know that she's got a little hobby on the side. She does fashion design and seamstress work, so 25% discount for anybody who goes to her. I won't tell you where she's working at. You got to find her. But there was many times she, yeah, there was many times she would do, put some patches on some shirts for people going to academy or for special events. We needed things done right away, and she would do that for us. So, we really appreciate it for that, and we'll probably hunt you down again for some more of those patches, yeah. But thanks a lot, Morgan, and we gave you some offense earlier.
So, he just asked me if I wanted to say anything, and I was like, no. I'm like, yeah. Oh, yeah. So, we're aware that in this job, you really can't be quiet, and you can't kind of be a wallflower. And you have to speak up because not only are you speaking up for your officers, you're speaking up for your city, okay? And I didn't know hardly anybody when I came down here. And I've had the pleasure of serving this community and having so many friends and getting to know so many people in so many different aspects. It was actually awesome. This was a pretty good 27 years of my life. And I don't regret filling out that application and coming down and hanging out with some of the older Aldermen up back there, you know? And we've all worked with each other at some capacity. And I just want to say thank you for letting me do that. I appreciate it.
Okay. We will move on to item 11, unfinished business. We have none. So, we'll move on to item 12 and start with 12A under new business.
A recommendation to approve local public agency engineering services agreement for the Cobb Boulevard sidewalk improvement project.
Before we get into this, Mr. Pigash, can, this is kind of straightforward formalities for doing some work down for a sidewalk. Can you go over this real quick for us?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The Sixth Ward elected to use some of their MFT monies on a project rather than maintenance this year. This will be a new sidewalk extending from Lincoln all the way east to where the sidewalk currently terminates on just west of Justine there, on the north side of Cobb Boulevard. So, it'll extend across Beckman Park. I think it's a great project for the city. There's no real pedestrian access across that area, you know? And there's a park there and the Boat Club. So, I think there's a lot of reasons for this project to happen. I think it was a great idea by both Sixth Ward representatives to do this project. So, this is for the design for the preliminary and construction engineering services for that project.
Thank you. And this is all paid out of MFT funds, correct?
Correct.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation for the public agency engineering services agreement?
So moved, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Cobb. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Johnson. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Nivares.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Abstain to avoid a conflict of interest.
Prue.
Aye.
Ten i's, zero n's, one extension.
Recommendation is approved. We have no appointments tonight. We'll move on to item 13, motions and resolutions. Item 13A.
Resolution authorizing the approval of an amendment to the agreement between the City of Kankakee and TESCA Associates, Inc., extending the expiration date of consultant agreement to December 31, 2023.
This is, we did approve this one year ago. This is to continue to have TESCA Associates as a city planner, and Mr. Mike Hoffman, very proud of the work. I think everybody sees it with our planning commissions. There's a lot of work that gets done there. We've got a lot of difficult zone properties. So, this continues the approval, engaging their services for another year period. And in the agreement, the rates remain the same this year as they did last year. So, we're looking for a motion to approve this resolution to extend this agreement to December 31, 2023.
So moved, Mayor.
Oh, boy. Hang on. Wow. Pretty good. I got, all right, let me, let me back. I think I heard a first from Alderman Cobb, and I believe I heard a second from Alderman Marzak. Okay, we'll go with that. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Nivares.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
Eleven i's, zero n's.
Resolution is approved. Next is item 13B.
A resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code for the Cobb Boulevard sidewalk improvement project.
Okay, this has to do exactly with, Mr. Pigash, with what we just approved earlier under new business.
Correct. This is just approving the resolution authorizing the MFT funds for the previously approved agreement.
Is there a motion for the approval of this resolution?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Cobb. Have a second from Alderwoman Johnson. Any questions or comments? Alderman Marzak?
I seem to recall a water main project that was going to be going through that area. Is that going to have any effect on this particular project if, you know, time-wise?
I'm not aware of any water main project down Cobb at the current moment. I know they were talking about going up, they were talking about running a new line to CSL at one point. I don't think that's happening anymore, or that's been put on hold for the time being. But I don't think it was ever extended that far to the east.
Gotcha.
So, but yes.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Nivares.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Abstain to avoid a conflict of interest.
Prue.
Aye.
Ten i's, zero n's, one extension.
Resolution is passed. Next is item 14, executive session. We do not have a need for one tonight. So, we'll move on to item 17, City Council Member Comments. Okay, Alderman Osinga.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder, we will not be having license in front of the city. We will be having a meeting again in February. I believe it's February 9, on the memory now.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Crawford?
I would like to also thank Mike for doing such a great job at what you guys do. And I also appreciate you keeping your costs the same as what you did last year.
Alderman O'Brien?
Just a reminder that we have Budget Committee that's coming Monday, the 9th. And Comptroller
Comptroller Kubal, I believe the plan is still for Bob Reitz from Lauterbach and Amen to be there. Is that still the plan?
Yes, Alderman, as far as I know.
So, that's a must-attend meeting. It's a lot of detail, but it's time well spent, and I encourage everyone to attend if you can. Thank you.
Alderman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to put it out there, because people ask me, so I'm going to ask you. I'm going to ask you, and maybe get together with the county board chairman, and find out why Kankakee gas prices so much different than the people up north. I mean, they got all the taxes up north that you can put on everything, but the gas prices here is higher than someplace up in Matson, Joliet, and I don't understand that. I know they say that basically this is a, it's a private company, you can't do anything about it, but that's got to be something we can do while we pay a higher gas prices. I think our citizens deserve a fair gas price, just like the people up in Matson and all of Joliet. Because one of my friends said they're going to go, they have to go out of the county to buy gas. He probably didn't do it, but yet it's still, but why you have to do that? That doesn't make any sense. So, I'll just put that out there.
We can definitely look further into it. I did ask a couple of questions about that. My understanding is a lot of it has to do with the delivery cost and what they deliver to them at the gas station. And we were always cheaper here, so I don't know why it's now expensive to deliver here now versus what it was in the past, but we'll continue to, we'll dig into it and see if there's some answers, at least a bona fide answer that makes some sense to us, so.
Thank you.
Alderman Crawford?
Thank you. Alderman Brown, I would agree with you. I take my daughter three days a week up to Romeo, though, which is just a little bit from Joliet, and gas has been 60 to 80 cents a gallon cheaper for the last six months. But we are getting it.
Any other Alderman comments? Okay, any department head comments? Mr. Hoffman?
Just a quick note, we do have a planning board meeting on the 10th this month because it shifted because of your city council meetings. We've got a couple more rezonings of property that we've got homes that are zoned incorrectly, so we're doing those, one on the west side of town, one on the east side of town. So, we're making progress on our zoning map. It just takes a while.
Thank you. Alderman Osinga?
Mayor, just for clarification, licensing franchise was this Thursday, be the 5th. I said the 9th. I knew I must have been wrong, so I checked it. We won't have a meeting on the 5th.
Thank you. Any other department head comments? Okay. Mayor's comments, I'm going to keep it brief. We haven't had one of these meetings in a long, long time. So, this is kind of nice, and I'm sure we'll be back into a lot of action at the next meeting, so we're quick tonight. Just, just wanted to say again, thank you, everyone. Hopefully, you had a great holidays. I do want to give a little bit of a shout out to the Department of Public Works. They did, if you remember, right before Christmas, we had those zero-degree temperatures. That was a high, and then we had that. They did a very good job of getting the streets cleared as much as possible. Again, when it gets below 10 degrees, sometimes they say 15, but at least 10 degrees, assault is really ineffective. And so, I was happy on Christmas Eve. They made a decision to go back out on Christmas Eve Day and work that Saturday to clear everything up and then let Mother Nature take care of the rest of it. So, but thank you for working in those. It's hard when you have, while it was light snow, it's hard when you have winds of those strengths and temperatures. It's hard on the equipment. It's hard to get that snow off the street. So, thank you for that team doing all that. So, with that, we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Prue. Is there a second? We have a second from Alderman Cobb. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being adjourned. Thank you, everyone.